This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, folks. The time being 4:47. I'd like to call this meeting of February 15th, 2024 to order. We will start with the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have a couple of minutes before our first arrival. I would like to remind folks to start thinking because I will ask during the selectmen's reports about the community service award. Also, we have been remiss, and I should say probably the chair has been remiss in announcing our new hires before it gets out into social media. And that's happened in the last couple of weeks. We've been experiencing a lot of in and out and a lot of hiring in the last six to eight months. And we've been very diligent about announcing our hires, but in the last couple of weeks, we've actually hired two people in the police department, but then we swore them in immediately when there was an opportunity, when all the selectmen were present and didn't get a chance to announce that. So I'm going to announce that we promoted Sergeant Andrew Salmon to the position of lieutenant on February 8th. He took his oath on February 8th, I should say. And then we hired Mike Fitzherbit from Bristol PD and hired him in as patrol sergeant. On February 8th, he took his oath as well. And also downstairs as a selectman's assistant, primarily duties answering to the town administrator and then filling in with the finance director is Amy Despens from the Tilton School. We welcome her. This week was their first week. So welcome, Amy. Did I? Anybody else I miss? Okay, good. All right, we have a chance to do a couple of minutes while we're at it, just to get ahead of things until our first appointment comes. First one's real simple. February 8th.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of February 8th as written.
Second?
A motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This was us.
Usually we name everybody that's at the meeting.
In attendance, you mean? Oh, really? Well, we named Vice Chair, Chair, the selectman anyway. Okay. I don't think she realized. We didn't take a note, write it down, did we?
No.
A lot of family members there. I was very impressed with that.
Attended by many.
Attended by many. That's exactly right. Minutes of February 1st. I have, I have one question. On page two of three, Selectman Constantino made a motion to include the language from DRA in a warrant, Article 11, and recommend it to be placed in a warrant at town meeting, seconded by Selectman Jessamine. No discussion. All in favor, motion passed. I don't know whether, and I'm asking the board because I really don't remember, but I, to me, I believe I asked it to be recommended by the selectmen and placed on the warrant at the town meeting. I don't either. It says, "And recommend it to be placed on the warrant at town meeting."
It's going to be there, so there you go.
But there's a difference when it says recommended by the selectmen.
On which?
On where it begins. Oh, there's two of them. The second one that says, "Selectman Constantino made a motion to include the language." This is the veterans' warrant.
Don't we go through all of the warrant articles and decide recommended or not recommended on them? And at that point, we would do that?
Yeah, you're right. That's exactly right. Yep. Well, that answers that. Good. Thanks, John.
Madam Chair, haven't you done some of that already? You were asking?
Some of them, yes. I don't believe we did 11 yet.
I was under the impression that that was the time that you, the board would recommend it and it will go under the warrant recommended by the Board of Selectmen. It's not a budget committee warrant article.
If in fact we did this with this motion, then this motion is incorrect. If, can we, can we just have her go back and check what the motion was?
Yes.
If so, then we probably would need another vote. Okay. Sound good. Anyone else have any questions?
Couldn't I make a motion to recommend warrant Article 11?
Oh, all right. Just the housekeeping. That's good. Sound great. But tonight.
And I just had somebody second it.
Second?
There you go.
Well, after the minutes? Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
We'll get back to it.
Any more on the minutes? Make a motion. We accept as written?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, John.
I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend.
Article 11.
Yes, warrant Article 11 as presented.
Second?
Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And that takes care of the housekeeping, just in case it isn't the way it is. Okay? Take the time to recognize our newly promoted lieutenant, Andrew Salmon, who's in the audience tonight. Congratulations. No, he didn't set that up, as a matter of fact. Just trying to be polite. Okay, we have a couple, couple of minutes. They're not here yet, right?
That's correct. I'd like to go downstairs and make sure they're.
Okay.
Please, thank you.
And that's this right here. Anything else we have for a minute or two?
Thank you.
Oh, we can take care of this item. Everyone saw my email about Heather asked back in January and said it was imperative that her files are locked. And there are some existing files that are not locking and need to be changed. And then make sure that they're in working order. And also, given the fact that she's willing to share the space, we need to make sure that the doors are locked when the person exits the room, and that's not being done, so.
You know, we really need to not have anyone else use that space because of the confidentiality of the documents in that room. And if Heather has to meet with somebody, which could, you know, might not be a scheduled appointment, she needs a place.
Where would you put the other person?
Well, the other person that's using it is just transcribing minutes.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's done on a computer.
Right.
We can either put a computer back in the downstairs meeting room or a supplier with a laptop. One of the, I mean, I turned mine in because I don't use it. That's all they need, and then they could sit in the downstairs meeting room. They don't need an office space to transcribe minutes.
Okay, all done. I agree.
Certainly shouldn't be that office.
Right.
And, you know, if some of those cabinets need to have new locks put in them, I think that's a
Okay.
That shouldn't be too difficult. I also understand the chief offered her confidential space there if she, because it's, her office down there is is not technically ADA compliant. It's difficult to maneuver a wheelchair in there, for example.
Right.
I mean, you can do it.
Right.
But it'd be easier. So anyway, I would, I would say that that has to be a private office.
Restricted area.
To be protected.
Right.
Restricted area.
Restricted, really.
Okay. Did everybody else agree to that, or?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll refresh Paul. We'll refresh that we'd like to make have this office a restricted area and perhaps the person that's in there have a laptop and meet out on the conference room or come up here or whatever, if there's no meeting and type away. But it needs to be a restricted area. And then ask the highway if they can see to it that the, her list is satisfied with the locks and files and things like that.
I'll take care of that, Madam Chair.
Okay, thanks.
Just question, do we have some cabinets? I think, I think that's probably where you're raising your hand. We have some locking file cabinets that are available.
Oh, okay. Maybe we can change, get with highway and just change those out. Paul?
It would probably take less time just to replace the locks in her existing cabinets. It's not a big job.
Because she would have to be available when you, if you changed them out, she would have to be available at that time to do it.
We probably have to pay for a locksmith to requeue the locks.
Yeah, just buy a new lock and take out the whole thing and just put in a new one.
Madam Chair, I think DPW can do that. Yeah.
Whatever. Yeah. Whatever is easiest.
Yeah.
All right.
Until.
Whatever works.
I don't know if she needs more cabinets, but.
She did need another cabinet, and that's why this was in the email, remember?
Yes.
And I don't know if she's acquired that other cabinet.
Not yet.
Okay, well, PD has some. All right.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, it looks like our appointment is here from the Turner Group, or Quantum, right? Turner Group now, right? It used to be Quantum, right? Okay, well, welcome aboard. Come on up. Years ago, I'm still around. Yep. Thank you for coming up.
What is it?
I think you and I have known each other since 2004, five.
Oh. Yes.
In May 2009. Yeah.
Anyway, thank you for having us. We appreciate it. We've been, we started a couple of years ago. Just kind of, all of a sudden, got a call.
Just slide.
Yeah, I just wondered if. All right, we got a call a couple of years ago from the former town administrator and the planning director, and we kind of started talking about this bridge over there that you have over there and what could be done. And you all know somewhat what has to be done. I don't know if everybody's had the luxury of reading that report by Hunter Associates, but allow me to start some introductions. Next to me is Anna Geraldi. She's our chief bridge engineer. I'm Jim Bouchard with, I'm senior project manager with the Turner Group. We were up until effectively October, January 1st, Quantum Construction Consultants, a company that was started by Lisa Martin to do strictly bridges. And Lisa retired in 2019. And after working, living in the Turner Group offices for 20 some odd years and sharing resources across the aisles, we just said, you know, this is getting to be very homogeneous. So we, Turner, Turner Group and Quantum decided to merge everything. We became the infrastructure division. We were doing so much of their heavy civil work anyway, resources going back. As you said, it's, it takes away from intercompany billing and all that. So this is how Quantum is now, the infrastructure division of the HL Turner Group in Concord, New Hampshire. So there you go. Short introductions on our part. And we did, like I said, we had a number of discussions with the former town administrator and with Lee Anne about this and about the project you had. And we also had a representative from Edie Sweat, their bridge contractors in Concord. And what came out of that, although some of those discussions was an option of looking at alternative. The Hunter report is very thorough, very good. They recommended back 2022, something neighborhood, I think, if I remember right, $1.4 million to rehab the bridge. And it had to be removed. It would have to be set someplace in town and in a secure area so they could do the work. Just to give you, I don't know if anybody's read this, but just to give you folks, and I know the people at home can't see this, but we just grabbed a couple of photos from them. And basically, there's a lot of parts to this Truesdale Bridge. It was, it was built in 1831. It's obviously, it stayed a long time out there. It's been very good. No salt has gotten, really gotten to it. But there's so many pieces on this that says, "Replace, replace." And this is, these are cast pieces. You have to be taken out. New sand moldings made in cast, i.e. the timeline and the cost. So Jeannie Forrester asked us one, and she said, you know, what else can we do? I said, have you, we talked about it, considering the possibility of, you know, removing the bridge and putting in a new pedestrian bridge. The existing bridge is 10 feet wide, 90 feet long. It's supported in the middle by a pier, middle of the river, excuse me. And we said, you know, put in a whole brand new bridge and keep this bridge or, you know, someplace, maybe put one piece of it out on the island and/or put the whole thing on the island. You know, you got a gazebo at one end, you got a granite monument, you got lighting, you got benches. And there was some concern about what do we do with it when it's out there? You know, the idea is the island's closed, you can't use anything. But if it's out there, it's 10 feet wide. It's a fairly uniform slope on it. Once set out there, I mean, I don't know. I mean, it could be used, painted up, maintained. Last time I know, the planks were done with Dennis Allen, did them a number of years ago. But anyway, it could be used, I don't know, say, I don't, and we don't know fully what the island had been used for, like for weddings or anything like that. And, but if you had it as a wedding, it's a great place, 10 feet wide, great place to put a wedding party up and direct it, you know, put place so you can get photos or something like that. There, there are some, some uses for it. There's, you know, something like that. So anyway, it kind of sat on limbo here for two years until Paul gave us a ring and said, would you be interested in giving us, you know, giving you folks a proposal to to investigate what was going to be required, both natural resource permitting, permitting through Division of Natural, Division of Historical Resources, and, you know, to put a new bridge in there and remove the existing one and preserve it. So that's precisely what you have in front of you. We delivered that this morning. And we're more than welcome to kind of walk you through it. And if you don't, if that's
Yeah, please do.
What's going on. So thank you for that. I don't mean to be talking all the time. I don't know how to jump over me and jump in. So there you go. So to start off with, is the background of the bridge. And it is, it is on the national registry, therefore it's subject to all the Secretary of the Interior's criteria for how to preserve this and and keep it, keep it, you know, keep it, you know, for fortuitous, relatively. Page two, we summarize, I just, we provided you some summation of what we thought about procure a new single span bridge. We are, we talked about a single span. Don't even use the pier. That way you don't have to evaluate the pier for structural capacities or anything like that. You can buy prefabricated bridges now that can go well over 90 feet and, and to put them in. So so that's one of the, that's what we were, you know, one of the, you know, the considerations we're going forward. Project team leading off on page two is us, you know, the HL Turner Group. To do any of this work and to do the work we need and to prepare, if the project moves forward, to prepare wetland plans and to bear, prepare construction drawings, we got to have survey. And it, with the bifurcation of the, of the river, we need survey, just to give you folks an idea. We need to go up by the, we need to start probably up by the, thank you, Paul. Up by the railroad bridge, go slightly above it, go down below the bifurcation, down, down this way, get Route 3, get both sides of the channel on, in. And so we have an idea of survey. We have to have wetlands identified. We have to have what is now known as the Roskin Report. And so we need, you know, Keach Nordstrom Associates of Bedford, we've been working with them for a long, long time. I understand that they have been working also with the town of Tilton for a long time through the planning, which is good, but they're the ones we utilize for the survey. Preservation Company, we have utilized for over 20 years. They are a very well-renowned historic consultant. And they are thought of highly by the Division of Historical Resources. So they become the asset to talk, when we sit down and talk about the removal of the bridge. Removal of the bridge, permanent removal of the bridge will be considered an adverse effect to the bridge. Yeah, just saying. And so with that comes mitigation and, you know, and discussion of how the town's going to preserve this bridge and maintain it. A lot of times, you know, in these cases, if it's a roadway bridge, they pick it up, they send it on the side of the road over there or someplace, and that's where it stays forever. But, you know, they might not, you know, want to know. Mitigation, sometimes it involves, DHR gets a little selective and, you know, what type of bridge is going to be put back in there. Sometimes they want another trust bridge put in. It was a trust, put a trust. Sometimes they say, no, we want something totally out of that vernacular, that cultural landscape, as they call it, and they want something different. So that remains a negotiation. What usually happens also along the way is we talk, discuss interpretive plaques. These are something that's 24 by 36 inches, might have the original bridge photos and and it's got a description of the bridge, how it was constructed. It's an educational thing. Somebody wants to come up, can be mounted on the bridge, can be mounted on the island, can be anywhere like that. So that's part of where we utilize Preservation Company because we're engineers. They speak the sensitive language better than we do. So with these people.
What if we don't want to preserve the bridge? I mean, it may be on the registry of historic places, but my understanding with that is the town never took that to the next level. We never created the historical district. It's just on the registry. And my understanding is that basically is so what.
And so you have done, they, here, to be honest with you, Selectman Dawson, they will, DHR will want to probably say, oh, you got to have these studies and, you know, but how's it relate to historical district and things like that? The good, the thing about this right now, as it stands right now, and we can talk about funding later, but the, unless there is a tremendous amount of federal funding involved in this to do, to remove it and put a new bridge in, this is town funds. Therefore, if there's never been what they call an element, historical district created or anything like that, you certainly don't want to start having that done.
And it could be, you just have to do a plaque.
If we're taking it off, scrap it. Why wouldn't we scrap it? We have no purpose for it if we're going to, if we're going to replace it with another bridge.
It's.
It's just a bunch of rusting.
Buckwood scaly.
Iron.
So my question is, why remove it? Stick the boards off. It's structurally sound. It's not going to fall into the river. It can sit there and just put another bridge somewhere else. People can walk along, they can see it, and it's perfectly fine. Can remind you that four years ago, it was a Tahoe drove over that bridge. No problem. I've been underneath it. I've cut along that wall, you know, cut and brush and everything. And the pictures and that I see, I don't see what they're calling out to be this major, it's going to fall down. It's not, it's not going to do that. And if we just stop using it, have it closed off, it's a nice place to look at. And in the future, if somebody decides there's funds and they can get some kind of grant or something, then they could move forward with it. And we just add a bridge.
The lack of federal funds is the primary reason that it's, we're having this discussion. Because if we could have gotten the federal funds and the preservation funds, we'd been moving forward already. So federal funds to remove and replace the bridge seems unlikely.
I think you can see that there's
No, that's fine.
A little bit of difference in, in the board itself and, and public opinion. Because when you go to look at public opinion, there's a medium out there that says, well, why don't we just get rid of the bridge? It's not only the oldest in the country, but it's old. Like, you know, Catherine said, it's a scrap of metal. It's not my opinion, but it's a scrap of metal. Why don't we put a footbridge over there and do like John said, you know, go alongside and, and do, do that type of thing? It's a lot cheaper to the town of Tilton to do that, and we can enjoy the island that we've been enjoying for many, many, many years with many, you know, concerts and weddings and all kinds of events over there. Hundreds and hundreds of people a week over there. And it's been dormant now for a couple of years.
If you leave that bridge there, whether you take the deck off or not, we're going to have to maintain it so it doesn't fall into the river.
And I mean, teenagers have a tendency to do whatever they want. They'll, they'll probably jump over.
Oh, then it's going to be graffiti, didn't?
Likely. Those things will happen, yeah. And even if you close it off, I mean, we've seen in other towns, literally, people, you had like trust bridge, sometimes, you know, they have trusses on the top too. They closed it off completely and, you know, kids, teenagers, you know, they climb up.
Climb up over it.
Could be a hazard.
Everything's a hazard. Trees are hazards. The guardrails are hazard. We have pipe walls that fall off. The other thing is, is the wall there where it's attached is owned by the state. So, you know, there's some responsibilities. And once we scrap it or we pull it out, we spend all that money, there's no turning back whatsoever. It's gone. And there's a lot of interests that want it. It's not going to fall in the river. I've been underneath there and everything else. And you take the deck off and, you know, it's
It's just getting older.
We need to put the money into replacing the blocks around the island, saving the island supposed to first, and then worry about that bridge.
How are you going to get to that, how are you going to get to the island with equipment?
So maybe you didn't hear what I was saying, but I said, we'll go put a footbridge in, okay, to get to there by foot. But we, there's, a footbridge isn't going to hold anything for equipment going over there. We'll do what we did before. We had cranes and we, at one time, when the river's low, we were able to drive across it with the loader. There's no more rules now, but we would have to do it by a crane. In fact, we removed whole trees, large 24, 36 inch diameter maple tree trunks with a crane to do that work. So a box would be.
Let's listen to Jim, but Let's listen to Jim, but Jim, you had mentioned that uh, and a bridge, another bridge to put in there. What would the cost of that approximately be?
Approximately, uh, and, and as it's already been discussed, the abutment on um, the route, uh, East Main Street, Route three, Route eleven
Right.
Is, it's a block wall. It is rotating, just like all the seawall is up there. What we envisioned was put in a new casting place, substructure, and, you know, use the blocks as um, the facade, just to maintain the historic. So you'd have to build a new one there. You'd have to look at the other side. Um, but, you know, but we, you're talking someplace in the neighborhood of seven hundred thousand dollars to nine hundred thousand dollars for a new bridge. Wait, um, and what we are envisioning is something in the neighborhood of ten feet wide. The existing bridge is ten feet wide. That's why we've been dealing with D H R. We said make it ten feet. The other thing we were looking at was um, when you look at the, at the roadway out here and, and I don't know what, I can't speak to the past, and you folks can certainly enlighten us. But, you know, if you've got somebody like Lake Region Tent who has been contracted to set up a tent over there, how do they get, you know, they could bring their, at ten feet wide with a new bridge, they could sit their truck right on there and be out of traffic way, only for the time they pull in and pull out to put the tent up, then take the tent down. Or if it's a function that has a caterer or something like that, you know, they need to get chairs or whatever. It, it, it has a functionality of getting out there um, to support a smaller vehicle, not tractor trailers. I'm, but I'm saying like a, you know, these single unit trucks and, and which we call an H-ten loading. Um, and then there's also a way now to uh, go out and do um, further maintenance with um, you know, um, equipment or to get, you know, smaller equipment, but to do the, you know, the island repair that has been sitting there for so long, you know. So it, it gives them a, you know, a viable way of doing that. Most contractors probably wouldn't want to get on that bridge right now, to be honest with you, take the liability of um, having the bridge go down, the existing bridge and/or, you know, uh, the endangering their personnel and equipment. So.
Seven to nine hundred thousand dollars to build a new bridge, approximately. How much to remove the old bridge?
Probably talking in the neighborhood of, you know, um, I think E D Sweat envisioned something around a hundred thousand dollars, you know.
And put it somewhere, then after that, move it and mount it somewhere.
Yeah, the biggest issue is the heavy-duty electric right there. It interferes with them uh, getting in to be able to lift right there on those segments and stuff like that. But, you know, that's what they were looking at is getting those reload, those lines relocated, but uh, we understand. I actually watched D O T doing borings along that roadway, so they're in the process of looking at
The corner.
Yeah, doing something there to stabilize that before it all ends up in the river. And I also heard that, that they may be looking at shifting the power lines and getting away from that edge. So the work can be done. So that, you know, we'd have to coordinate with D O T to find out what their schedules are. So, but anyway, I, to answer your question, yes, you know, be, yeah, substantially less. So, we figured, you know, that's why we figured in our, in, in the price of um, seven nine hundred, that's the cost of taking the bridge out, new abutments, put a new bridge in. That's construction cost. We've given you a proposal just to get through, to identify all the issues would be required, get the survey done, get the basic work done with um, have a pre-application meeting with uh, wetlands to find out what they're going to have to require. Um, and to talk about this and then also work with D H R. So when it goes to design, then we would, um, you know, everything's known to go forward. We also had uh, some time allotted in here to, to reach out to some agencies uh, and state like D O T Transportation Alternatives Program. They fund, fund these type of pro- programs that um, uh, see what's involved. We have regional planning commissions, regional planning commissions. Lakes Region always gets a pool of money that they have set aside for projects they deem necessary um, that don't fall into the D O T's uh, step, their ten-year plan. So they have money sometimes to allocate to these projects, at which point they work with D O T, which goes back into their uh, the Transportation Alternative Program. The D O T is administrator of the funds, but it's actually coming through Lakes Region. Um, L chip, you know, um, and um, Land and Water Conservation Resource Fund uh, has money available um, for some things like that. Trying to get into the wetlands, um, Aquatic Resource Management Fund wouldn't be any good because you're not, you're, you're not constricting the waterway, you're not going to change it. So that's just resource it. Yeah, it's not available, but there
Well, they may be restricting the waterway because their, D O T is trying to, with their existing plan that they showed us, they, in shoring up the guardrail, they want to take twenty-five feet of the river.
Oh, really?
Yeah, which means
Change the whole hydrology.
Which will change the hydrology of it.
Right at the island.
Right.
Oh, really? See, okay, you know, every time we come up here to talk to you, Paul filled us in a little bit. We weren't aware of that.
Right. So it heads right directly to the point of the island where the, the big um, pieces are, are falling in now. So that changes the whole scope of the velocity, the hydrology, everything, right there.
Okay, so the span
And that's kind of where it's convoluted for us because we'd like to the hydrology study, but we're waiting on the state. But we want to move forward, but we're kind of waiting on the state because they should pay some of that with the island because they're changing the scope of where the water's going to go.
The town should hold their, um, hold to their horses and say, you, you know, you have to make sure our island's protected.
Correct. Absolutely.
That's what we're working on now.
And, 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 right.
And the moving of the wall and that twenty-five feet Pat was talking about isn't right at the bridge. It's further up.
It's the corner, right.
Yeah.
The bend, right. The corner, yeah, the bend.
Staying the same around by the bridge.
Correct.
Imagine that the bridge span would stay Yes.
So they got cut out a big section of that curve by twenty-five feet into it.
But by doing it at the bend
That is
Right. But by doing it at the bend, it shoots straight at the point of the island where it comes in.
Velocity increases drastically when you narrow a river.
If you stand on the railroad bridge and look up at the edge, um, Jeannie Forster and I trying to think of who we took. It was somebody from the D O T engineering department. And we walked in the middle of the uh, railroad bridge and walked ten feet to the railroad bridge from the road. And you could see twenty-five feet to where they were coming across it, where the water would come down. And then we walked in the middle of the bridge and where the water was going to come up. And then we looked back towards the island, and that was directly going to flow right, right through. I mean, it was pushing it so that it was going to go right to the point of the island. The head of the island, I should say, not point.
We thank you for the knowledge because we, like I said, we um, we didn't, we hadn't reached out to D O T yet.
Right. Well, so that changes it because it, it, they have a plan, but they, since we had a meeting with them, which was about, what, nine months a year? Uh, at least. With that information, they were going back to do some legwork on it. We haven't heard from them since. Um, we don't know what Jeannie has uh, worked with them. I do know that there was something to do with changing the pole over to the uh, with Tilton School. I'll look at Scott for that, but uh, across the street. But I haven't heard any, we haven't heard anything from D O T regards to that at all from them since that meeting.
Well, thank you for the knowledge.
Do you know, do you have any names from the D O T? Who's working on it?
Uh, we
Two fellows that came in.
Yep, we have it. I have it in my folder. Oh, yep.
Throw in a couple of names. I don't want to confuse you, that's all.
Yeah. Have they given you a timeline?
Well, in the future.
They said sometime in the future, but then they, they first said two thousand twenty-five, but then it was pushed off to two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six. So
So we brought it, this, um, the failing of the guardrails in the wash on that bridge, uh, I believe almost twelve years ago.
Yep.
And they've been promising to do something. Um, and then it kind of finally came to a head when they wanted to go into our Caleb Hill Road, and we said, well, what are you doing about our guardrail falling in? And it's also on our emergency management plan because if the guardrail and that wash is out there, which it's doing, there'd be no access for three, Route three and eleven.
Route three, Route three would be closed.
Exactly.
No police, no fire getting through, and there's no quick way to get around.
Yeah, fire department is on this side of the bridge.
Right. But Caleb Road, that's a state-owned road, isn't it?
No, let's not talk about that.
It is currently.
All right, I apologize.
So that kind of came to a head at that meeting. So it'll be the guys that are doing
Well, you know, if, if you want, you can, um, you can have, um, town administration, Paul.
We can get that information. I know I have it at home, Paul. If, if I don't have it in my book here, I know I have it at home.
And the most, the most recent conversation came when, after they had presented the ten-year plan at the police department. And then it was a month or so later when they came in front of us because the, the, the issue was is that we were not in favor of having a rotary out here, which was in their ten-year plan. And remember, and then they said, oh, we can, we can pull that money. And we said, no, 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 no. How about you reallocate it to the corner up there? So that you can start, you know, so that we can get that project underway. Um, so, and they were here in front of us because we were going over dangerous intersections, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that was the most recent conversation. That was, that was late fall. Yeah, yeah.
A little bit negotiating, saying, doing the rotary. We want you to fix that section of the road properly, you know, and build those blocks and So one of the problems with the island is compaction of the soil on it that's been killing trees and exposed roots. So I don't see why we'd want any vehicle traffic going on that island. So H-ten bridge may not actually be necessary because we don't want cars going over there as far as I'm, I know.
I was thinking more
We've never had cars go
No, I'm thinking more of a way of if the town had to get a piece of tobacco over there.
Yeah, we
Okay, all right. I'm just saying, and to maintain it. The, the bridge was also because of the lack of availability of parking. You know, if you got an event or, you know, the need to have a vehicle there, right? These are just some thoughts we had as to why you would want it. That was all.
Ever question.
If a tree comes down, you're going to need to have something that's going to
We had it all with the crane.
But you need to get the train over there. Now, you can't get a crane across the water nowadays. That was years ago.
It is hard.
We, we removed a thirty-six inch diameter um, maple, rock maple with a crane just two years ago.
Chickens.
Where did you shut the crane?
Um, was it at Arwood's or
Where they set the crane up. It was a big crane that reaches right over there.
It's a heavy piece of wood. So
Uh, what's the chances of rehabilitating the bridge on site? Making it safe enough to walk across? We've got one piece is completely broken off on, on one end of the bridge. Uh, we have the, the recommendations about uh, replace this piece, replace that piece. What if we just like, I don't know, welded the one piece, made it safe enough so that we can walk across?
Well, they braze cast iron. Cast iron can be braze very well. It's common thing.
What's the chances of that?
Um, the select, in answer to your question, uh, Suckman, Justman, um, we do know that on this side of the bridge, that abutment, the bearings are gone, they're shot, they need to be replaced because the wet holds the bridge up and so and there's members that are rusted completely through. You're right, their section gauze, gone. Um, you'd have to look at how you take those pieces out and, and redo it in. Um, at this point, you know, we're simply relying on the Hunter Report. We haven't been there. We haven't taken a look at it. I can't give you a good approximation. I'm sorry. I'm, we've been willing to look at it and evaluate it, but I mean, uh, I don't, you know.
Bridge is closed because quite frankly, we know that there are structural issues and the bushes are gone and the stones are turning inward and might last for a hundred years, right the way it is. And it might come down in a month. So abundance of caution, the bridge is closed. But if we could make the bridge safe,
No, I agree.
You know, I mean, and not have to completely remove it for a hundred grand and spend nine hundred thousand dollars in taxpayer money. That would be ideal. Is there money out there for rehabilitating the bridge? Sure. We've been trying to get it for two years and with no luck whatsoever. So, uh, I, I don't want to put a million bucks on the taxpayers to build a bridge to basically nowhere.
I, we understand.
And one of our big concerns is that we, with the um, rising of the water, I think you've seen how much water has been flowing in all of our rivers. That river has been flowing um, at peak rates almost all summer as well as winter. And we're concerned it's eroded away a lot of the stones that keep the island there. That our money should really focused on keeping the island there because if we fix the bridge and we open island, what's, what's the point? Um, we don't have vehicle traffic over there. People don't deliver things over. The heaviest thing would be a riding lawnmower that would go over there. So, you know, and I personally question some of the information in that report, and I think we should have a second opinion on with the actual structure stuff on it. Having being a person that's climbed underneath there and cleaned out and stuff like that. Um, I, uh, the crack in the end abutment was, it was struck by a snowplow and it cracked. It's not rotted out. It's cracked. It's like that. It's cast iron. Braze it. It gets braze. We did discuss that with somebody years ago on brazing it. They just stopped. No, we're good. Take the whole bridge out and rebuild it. So it's turned, I think it's turned from what could be repaired to be put into service at, you know, whatever level it is into this monstrosity of two and a half million dollars to take it out, ship it to Connecticut, sandblast it and reconstruct parts. I, I think we need to really look at it and have a double. We never had a second opinion done on it.
But how are you going to repair that abutment or pier, whatever you want to call it, on the uh,
We have to, I think we need to look at it.
Fill in the gap. Weld it and welding it.
No, no, no.
Not welding.
The blocks it's sitting on that are
The wall.
So I, I think we need another opinion.
Without moving the bridge.
Hold on a minute. Let one talk at each time, but John, John's ask keeps saying, second opinion, second opinion, second opinion. How many uh, second opinions can we get in the state of New Hampshire for this type of work?
Um, I mean, structural engineers too, they, I mean, we do tend to be conservative. Uh, you don't want something to fall and, you know, in the river and hurt somebody.
And that's why it's called
But we've never had a second opinion, and there are, there are many in New Hampshire. I looked up, you know, and saw the listing of them. So if we're going to spend two million dollars and not have a second opinion.
I'm not challenging it. I'm just asking, because we were told something different, John. That's why I'm trying to get the answer.
I know.
Okay.
But now you're talking about spending more money to have somebody, look, somebody else, and I don't know the company that looked at it, to have somebody else look at the bridge and tell you what's wrong with it.
Right. And how many
And what it would cost to fix it.
How many thousands of dollars did we already spend to get that report?
That's what I'm asking. Was it eighty?
Oh, yeah.
Eighty thousand dollars.
Upwards of eighty.
I think, I'd rather put that eighty thousand into a new bridge.
But I see the, the report you have also, you know, detail the history of it. Obviously, another, when you get a second opinion, wouldn't have to do any of that. They would only do the structural.
And that report did not say that we had shut the bridge down.
No.
It reset, it, no, the report said that the town, if I remember and paraphrase the town, should retain a structural engineer to evaluate whether the bridge had to be shut down.
So they were Close it to vehicular traffic.
Yeah, because when you have a bridge that's ten feet, you know, you can have pretty much anything go over.
Yeah, like, like we had somebody with the Tahoe, oh, it's wide enough. I'm just going to drive my car over there.
Riding lawnmowers go over it. We don't want anything else.
We had riding mowers.
That was an exception.
Yeah, that was somebody who shouldn't have done it.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I'm not arguing that. It's just, yeah, there's always.
What you're offering us is um, essentially we'll have three proposals for new bridges.
We'll, we'll identify, you know, the potential three, three types of bridges that could go in there. Yes.
And all the minutia that goes with that, the right of way, the historical, the the hoops we have to jump through. And that will also include, um, the concrete, the, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Blocks. I don't know if they're concrete or granite.
They're granite.
How that's going to be replaced.
Yep.
Is this also going to include the erosion problem we're having?
Not on the island.
On the island.
No.
Okay.
Is there possibly to look at putting an additional bridge a little further down, leaving that one in place?
The answer is yes.
Yep.
And you know what that cost would be as opposed to trying to, you know.
The answer is, again, it'd be very similar to what we just said. You're, you're putting a new bridge depending on the span. You're going to narrow it up. Um, but you still got some, let me make it, I mean, typically, you, you know, you want six feet wide because that's under ADA code. You've got to have six foot clear from all the railings and stuff. So, um, yeah, you could put it in and, and, um, and you're still within roughly the same dollar value, unfortunately, because you're casting new, a place and, uh.
You still need the footings.
And a contractor will need a good staging area. As you know, as you mentioned about getting the tree down, he's got to, he can't get onto the, you know, to dig for a new foundation out there. He's got to get, you know, be able to get a, uh, a piece of equipment in there over there. So he can dig down below frost to cast in his new footings and, and go. There, there's some expenses to that.
We have talked about a lot of different options. We haven't heard from Scott yet. He's been very quiet because this is a real passion for him, this bridge. We've talked about a lot of different options. Before we leave, before Jim leaves here tonight, we should probably give him somewhat of a direction of what we would like him to do. I mean.
Well, if we hire him.
Correct. Absolutely.
It'd be good to identify exactly the scope of work that, as, as, as Madame Chairman is saying, what, what do you want us to do for you?
Right.
You want to leave the bridge and look at, leave that, don't, don't worry about that. Just let it be. Design us something, you know, that can, start something that can get us onto the, back, back to the island. A narrower pedestrian bridge, um, which takes us out of DHR, all that. We don't care about them anymore. It's just, um, it's just, you know, fine, um, those things. Or do you want to evaluate the bridge and figure out how, um, what can be done, you know, to keep the existing bridge in place and continue to utilize it. And as to the Tahoe situation, you know, you know, maybe you need a, you know, a gate in front of it or something like that. Well, it's similar to when we designed the WRTA project many years ago. And we have the gate, you put a more ornamental gate than the, that, those type of gates. We have a bollard and a gate and it's a side gate, but so people can walk on, you know, five feet wide now to get on. And if you need to get a riding lawnmower on or something, you know, they have a bigger, you know, an opening gate. I don't, you know, but most of them can get through anyway. But, or just block it off.
It's ten feet wide. Just put a bollard in the middle.
Yeah.
On the entrance.
Yeah, that, I mean, you know, simply, yeah, that, yeah.
Okay. Want to talk about it a little bit later and.
You want a consensus of?
Yeah, yes, consensus. Should we take the bridge down first?
It's old, it's worn out, scrap it, put a new bridge in.
Okay, consensus.
Absolutely not.
It's historic. Uh, it's, it's part of the entire makeup of the downtown area. And if we can fix it in place, repair it in place, make it safe to cross. Um, I would rather go that way, quite frankly.
But if it can't be fixed in place?
Now, now it's hypotheticals that we don't know about yet.
Well, it's not hypotheticals because we got a report that says it's got to be pieces from this port to that port to everywhere. At a, what, one point four million dollars? We've already got a report that says that.
And that doesn't even include putting it back.
That's correct.
They didn't say anything about whether they could repair it and well enough to, uh, sustain the weight of people walking over it.
Well, I'm saying that that report is our option. That's the option that we were working under. Go ahead, Jim.
The report, as we understood it and we read it and went through it, the report was to repair or replace the pieces that were damaged. So it would restore the bridge back to its original functionality and be able to be utilized as it was originally intended some hundred and sixty years ago or whatever.
Hundred and forty-two.
Pardon?
Hundred and forty-two.
Okay, there you go. Thank you.
Complete restoration.
So, yeah, I mean, that, that's what they were doing. And from understanding, one of the meetings that we did have, uh, a gentleman from Hunter Research was on, uh, Patrick was on a conference call with us. And as we understood from him discussing with Jeannie and Lee and, and, uh, his idea was, it was to take the bridge off, get somebody to take the bridge off, put it in a place within this area. So it could be worked on, not take the whole thing away, but leave it here so they could take those pieces off, repair them, whatever had to be done, re-sand cast them, whatever, put them back on and, and continue to work on the bridge over the course of a year and a half to two years here in Tilton. And because something, you come up, take some pieces off, takes you maybe a couple of months to go back and then get those done, bring it back up. And, but I mean, that was, that's how we understood the situation.
Uh, so, eh, I get that, but we've already been two years out, out with this bridge. We go, that process, we're two, three, maybe four years before we even see the light of dawn before we can each walk over that bridge.
Well, what can the taxpayers afford?
Going around the table, asking for the consensus.
Yeah, I'm starting, John.
You're next. No, Joe is.
Well, I haven't finished my.
Hasn't finished.
No, I'm pretty much finished. I'm up in the air here. I'd love to see a covered bridge, but I really like that bridge and, um, nine hundred thousand dollars for the taxpayers.
It's better than a couple of million.
The last quote we had was one point four.
Two, one point two five.
One point two five.
But there's, there were a lot of.
That didn't include a lot.
That included removing the bridge, fixing it and putting it back.
No.
There were some moving parts.
Did not include putting it back.
That, there sure was.
Of course, prices don't go down.
Correct.
No, they don't. And in two years, God only knows what it is now. By the time we get to building your bridge, God only knows what it'll be. You can't give me a price today that's going to be good twelve months from now. This doesn't work like that.
I mean, when we do cost estimates, like in the beginning, we do pretty contingencies in and, and then as we get closer, you know, it.
We forecast out based on.
Yeah.
Yeah, it says here the plan identified a general cost estimate approximately one two hundred, one, one million two hundred and fifty thousand for the work, which didn't, did not include removal, transportation, temporary protection and reset.
One point two million didn't read it. They were going to do all this work, but they, they.
There you go.
It's on us to move it. I missed that part.
So now we're up to two point five million dollars or better.
Joe, what do you, what's your synopsis here?
I'm all set to take the bridge down and, uh, spend a hundred thousand dollars. And if you want to go out in a boat, uh, you go out to the park or down there and you take the boat over to the island. That's the cheapest thing I can think of right now.
Oh, you know, we could put a ferry up.
So.
Does the public want the bridge to go to?
Yes.
Okay.
The public wants a bridge going to the island.
They want access to the island.
They want access to the island. Absolutely. Yep.
If you look at it, if I may, if you look at it, um, what that island and what that bridge does with, it sort of becomes, it can be utilized as, and I want to put my master planning hat on, it becomes like the anchor. Hilton, downtown Tilton and down, and, and the other anchor is down in Franklin with the water park. If you have something that's really nice and accessible like this, you have more people interested in having a wedding there. They've got a park over this area. They got to walk downtown.
We have concerts every Sunday during.
People have, they don't, they can't park near the island. They got to walk through the island. So that helps. You know, or maybe now they, you know, they finished the concert, oh, look, you know, and I'm not promoting his business, but you can go right across and go into onions and have a dinner and stuff like.
And they do.
And they do. So I'm just saying, you've got to view that as, this is the anchor. This is the gateway to what is now being, um, I, what did I say to Paul this morning? I said, the phoenix rising out of the ashes, if you want to say that. It's, you know, restoring this downtown area. And, you know, it, it's a use that as it sits, does you no good if no is no access.
I, I don't really, my opinion, I don't really feel like we're anywhere. So I think that, you know, it's Scott needs to weigh in here and, well, we've heard from him.
No, you're going around the table. You just skip.
No, we've gone that way and then we went this way. But go ahead, speak again. Go ahead. And then Scott, I'll get to you in a, in a few minutes.
So if you look at any pictures of Tilton and the island, they show that bridge and it, and the foliage and the bandstand and all the picturesque type stuff. And it would be nice to fix it so that it could be used solely as a pedestrian and a lawnmower type going over bridge and doing that. Um, or if we remove the decking and, um, continue the guardrail off, block it off and just have it as looking nice, you know, as a, a photo scenic type thing. The, so we could, my thoughts are is that we could either fix that bridge to a point where it can withstand what we use it for as opposed to the vehicular stuff that they were trying to get back to. Or, um, leave it in place, but have it just there to look nice. And further down, a little away from it, install a pedestrian bridge. If we can't do that, you know, of the type that you folks are talking about, um, maybe a little less, uh, not the H ten. Um, but something like that. One of the problems that we do have with that bridge where it is, is just the handicap accessible part because it's so close to the road there that people can't get wheelchairs onto it. And, and it's like a, I don't know if you've worked at the bridge there and it's, there's no handicap access. But further towards the center of town, it gets wider. There's more room for stuff and you could, you know, relocate a different bridge there and still have it as a scenic thing. That's, that's all I can say.
Here, Chris Robert from ED Sweat and I sat and chatted about it. He said, well, don't we just construct a, a narrower pedestrian bridge? You know, single span over this one and leave it in place. And just, we'll just span right over it and it's just underneath. And I said, the problem being it's just, is ADA access. How do you get at, how do you get up onto the bridge? And because now you're talking being six or seven feet up in the air possibly for the trusses and span. So. Huh? It would look really, it would be funny and, yeah. So you'd have to have these ADA ramps coming up and you have to have a wall next, right next to the travel lane. And I said that.
I don't think that's any cheaper than just building one.
No, it isn't. It isn't.
I think it's going to be more expensive.
Yeah, um, but so just.
Downstream, it's real wide there. Puddings and.
Scott. Thank you.
Jim and Anna, what I'm about to say has nothing to do with you. I, I don't know how we've gotten here. And when I look at the letter from a preservation company, says the town has since chosen to replace the bridge with a new one. I don't remember agreeing to that. I don't remember it ever being here. I mean, if it was done on a meeting when I was not here, that's fine.
It hasn't.
So I do not recall that statement being made ever.
It hasn't.
Okay. It's in the letter, in the back, just letting you know. Um, so, you know, it, I, obviously over the last two years, two plus years, this has become a very complex situation. We want access to that island. You know, as I've said multiple times with my young kids growing up, one of the things I would do is walk them down the hill. We would grab a slushie at Cumberland Farms, go across, hang out on the island. It's a wonderful place. Back in its heyday, it was, it was a masterpiece. Um, I, I think the bigger picture, and this doesn't have to do with any of the work that you're considering, becomes exactly how much of a masterpiece do we want to make it in the future? Um, you know, I think that it is the gateway from the east to this town. Um, I know that making things a masterpiece costs a lot of money. But when we are entering the town, what do we want it to look like? Um, I, I, I'm, I, I'm not in favor of putting a new bridge in. Um, I know that there's more expense in terms of restoring this bridge. And it's not, it, it, as, because it is mostly wrought iron and not cast iron, that makes it more complex because you can't just weld it. Because the impurities in wrought iron will come out when welding at the excessive heat, making it more rigid and more, more susceptible to cracking. So, yeah, so there, there's, there's very little cast iron in that bridge. It's more wrought iron than it is cast iron. Um, you know, it, it is the, from what we know, it is the only bridge of its kind on this planet left. Um, I, I would love to see it preserved. I understand if the direction that the town takes is to do something different, to be able to get access quicker, um, that's fine. Um, but you know, e- even preserving it, even making it a showpiece or something that people can come look at comes with a cost afterwards. We know that they're, they're going to have to do lead paint abatement on it. There's lead paint on the bridge. If we were to put it as a showpiece where people could look at it, the last thing we want is any citizen going up, picking at it, getting lead paint exposure. Um, you know, how are we going to maintain it in the future? What's going to be the, you know, what's going to be the cost for the DPW to continue to paint it, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? There's lots of things going out. I would love to see us go after and see if we can preserve that one. Be able to get some of the grants that we had been working for or other ones that may be out there to offset what the cost to the taxpayers would be. Because as we all know, a new bridge is going to be, is going to be fully on the burden of the taxpayers. When we discussed last year and had the warrant article passed in terms of trying to work toward getting grants to offset what the burden on the taxpayers would be. You know, and, and one of the things is, is I think that you're going to, i- if we were to, to angle at preserving this bridge and making it so that it was fully usable again, I think you're going to get a lot, you could get a lot more buy-in from private donors than you would saying if we're going to have a brand new bridge coming up. Um, you know, it, it's just a complex question. It's a really complex situation. Um, you know, and moving a bridge to one end or the other, I was, I was just actually over near the site the other day. Um, you, you've got a much broader span. Um, and when you look at the bridge, obviously, when they installed the bridge, they had built up the one side of the island so that they could have a more subtle drop off. And we know that we've done work over the years to make sure that it was ADA compliant. But if you go to another part of the island, then what becomes the terrain change there that you're going to need for, you know, the drop off? How does that change? What are the effects that, you know, DES are going to look at? I, I think there's a lot more complex questions that obviously would need to be answered and would go with the work that they would do too. But, um, I, I've never agreed that we would put a new pre-engineered bridge in.
And you're right, uh, Scott, and I apologize, uh, Jim, because the board has never agreed to that. And it's probably, uh, I apologize for this being misled to you. Um, unfortunately, but however, it, it's interesting that, that you've brought this to us because it really brings to the forefront our thought process again.
And, and just to put it out there, let's say you did remove this one and put in a new one.
Mm-hmm.
That the manufacturer that builds the bridge, you could give them a picture.
Mm-hmm.
You can ask, you know, can you make it look something similar?
Similar to that.
Yeah.
Which would be neat.
Um, it would be with welded pieces and things like that. It's not like, you know.
Right.
What Slap and Ruggles is talking about.
And by the way, this is, I, I read this thoroughly when we got the digital version of it. And by the way, this is, I, I read this thoroughly when we got the digital version of it. It's, it was great to read because it just allows me to see more and more of what the process is and who has to be involved. Yeah.
I.
But in all fairness, the preservation company, they proposed what we asked them to.
Yeah, no, 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 that's, yeah, so it's, as I said, it's not an indictment. I, I just didn't know what information had been.
Got it. We have a lot to think about and it's still, it's still a convoluted question. Do we take it down? Do we not? Do we build it? Do we repair it? Do we do it? But until we make those decisions, I'm sorry, till we make those decisions, we need to have numbers associated with those figures. We can't justify, we don't know if it can be repaired, so we can't answer that question. You know, how do we?
Well, we don't know if it can be repaired in place.
Correct. We don't know if it can be repaired in place. And I guess that's where I'm going. Thank you, Catherine. Repair it in place. We don't know. And if it can, what would be the number associated to that? If it can be replaced with all of that, until we get that number and place it aside with a number to replace a bridge and then also get a number to, a correct number to take it out, do all that and reset it, what that cost would be to the, to the public, our residents? And also what federal funds are legitimately out there, available to us to offset the cost of that? Whether it be repair the existing bridge or sending it out, coming back to offset that as opposed to the new bridge? So there's some thought processes, but until we get figures, you know, which is something that we need, do, you know, do you want to wait and talk about this later? Do you want to talk about it now while Jim is here? What do we want to do? Because sooner or late, okay, go ahead.
May I, may I make a statement, Madam Chair? These good folks did quite a bit of work on this particular subject for no remuneration.
Right.
And I introduced Jim and Anna here now because they were all over the files and they did some very good analysis for us. I would hope that the board would at least ask them to revise their scope and fee to do work that you are asking and numbers that you're asking them to look at. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
I think that you didn't have the whole story to say. So, and, and my comments are not against you or anything. It's, it's more what we hear from everybody in town. There's all different opinions. There's a lot of people say, hey, it's just a bridge, rip it out. We don't want, we, the idea is to get to the island. So the people, let's say, that's part of our character of our town. But we don't want to spend two, three million.
So you, you, so you would like to have basically construction cost for different alternatives?
Well, also whether or not this bridge can be repaired in place.
How can it be repaired in place when you have to replace one of the invatments?
I don't know. I'm not a bridge person.
I think that's an opinion that could be looked at.
It's blocked.
Go ahead, Jim. Jim's going.
They're blocks, right?
No.
Are they concrete blocks?
No, they're granite.
That's not what we're talking about.
That's what I'm talking about.
Oh.
On the Route Three side of the bridge where it lands, that wall, if you will, is built of blocks.
Owned by DOT.
And it's.
It's taken 140 years of water and water pressure.
And now it's moving.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's what they talked about, how it had angled in and started to move.
Has anybody been here, been to look at it, gone underneath?
Yeah.
Have you climbed down underneath there?
Well, listen, so can you stop for a second? Because Jim was going to say something until everybody.
I was simply going to respond to Slough and Dawson's, you know, it, it, the work could, you know, to, you know, basically you would have to get into the waterway, they would have to put state, you know, heavy duty stage into jack the bridge up, do the work from the US Route Three side. And, you know, obviously the excavate and cast and all that, and then lower the bridge back down and mill out in the air. If there were, if repairs could be done to it while it's in place, that might happen.
Ching, ching.
All ching, ching, all of it, no matter what option. It's all of it.
It is.
There's just a few more chings with certain options.
The board first. Okay. Go ahead, Jim.
Would it help if, you know, if you want to discuss this amongst yourselves? And then it sounds like you'd probably need to, you know, or simply put, you, we could be retained to come up with some, some construction cost estimates. The cost of rehabilitating it in place, we'll have to give that some thought, to be honest with you. But, I mean, because nobody's ever worked on this type of bridge before.
Right.
And that's what it will do.
Anything's possible if you have a big wall.
So.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I think even in place, it's not cheap.
We don't, we, do we have a majority opinion here? I didn't hear a majority opinion.
No, we, we haven't even decided yet, Catherine.
No, no, we did a consensus, but I didn't hear what the majority of the selectmen wanted.
As far as?
I think it was to keep the bridge.
In some way, shape or form.
I, I think that a lot of the people were undecided. Joe's undecided, I'm undecided. John wants to keep the bridge.
And Scott wants.
Scott wants to keep the bridge. So, but I'm, I'm undecided. I want to know what the alternatives are to see what the different, if it can be repaired in place. I'm not a fan of taking it out, waiting two years and bringing it and tearing it apart and bringing it to Colorado or Wisconsin or wherever it's going to go. I, I'm not a fan of that. I can tell you right now, I'm not. Because if we're going to spend two or three million dollars on that, the taxpayers can't afford that. They can't unless we had a $2 million grant, I would understand it, but not. So I, I think, Jim, if you can hold on, if you have some, a time, I would like it to open it up briefly to the public because we do have a couple of hands raised in the public. And I will just ask them to keep it brief because this is only between the board. And then perhaps maybe we can talk about it later amongst ourselves and make a decision and then retain or not to retain Jim and company. Okay. All right. One at a time, please, online. I know there's several hands raised. So Chuck?
Yeah, I think an engineer does need to take a look at the bridge and see what would need to happen, if anything, in order for it to be continued to use, be used for pedestrian traffic. We still don't really know the answer to that without replacing or anything. And another point that was brought up was what would make that structurally sound to get over? That, that does not necessarily mean that you'd have to make all of the repairs to the bridge using the same kind of materials. Because sometimes you can actually could run some other pieces of metal structurally or whatever, including the blocks underneath, and still make sure that the current bridge was usable for foot traffic and lawnmowers. And Kathley?
And Kathy Mitchell. We've been kicking this can down the road for two years. And even if by magic we got a $2 million grant, and of course, 80% of all grants are always denied, but even if we got that, it's going to be another two years. Are we willing to wait five, six, 10 years before we can use the island? Or are we going to do something? It may very well be costly. It's something that the voters in this town need to discuss and make a decision.
Thank you, Kathy, and thank you, Chuck. Any others online? Thank you. All right, Jim, thank you for coming in. We've got kind of what, what you're doing. And thank you, Andrea, right? Sorry, I forgot. Other, okay. I appreciate you coming in and, and bringing this forward. This is an eye opener. I've read some online. I, I didn't get to it all. I appreciate it. We will look, we'll take a look at it and we'll discuss it a little bit later when we have a little bit more time. And see if we can come to a consensus. Yep. Okay.
I think we need to give you a clear idea where we're going.
Wonderful. That's even better. Yep.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It's good to see you, Jim.
Awfully nice to see you.
It's stuck in my throat, stuck in my lungs.
Anna, very much. Thank you.
Okay, next on our list is the, good night. Town administrators report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got a couple of housekeeping items I'd like to go with you first. The month of February, we have five weeks. And I'm wondering if the board wants to have a meeting next week or whether we move on to March?
Next week is the 22nd, but then we have the 29th, so. What say you, Board?
Jessman 29th.
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 29th, and then, and then we have, the next one would be March 7th, would, would be the exact following week. Then we would have the 7th and the 21st.
Is the 7th.
So the 7th would be the opposite week of town meeting. Do you want to meet the 14th, which is the 12th, between the 12th and the 16th? And skip it, skip the 7th? So meet the 29th, skip the 7th and meet the 14th and the 28th?
Who does?
Can we make that decision on the 29th? Because it really depends on what's going on.
What we have. Got it.
Like this bridge issue, we really need to resolve it and move forward.
I agree with you.
One way or another. And if we just start going, you know, twice a month or every other week, we're not going to get stuff done.
Also, Madam Chair, can I say that tonight, of course, our assessor and the DRA folks canceled and they asked to reschedule for March 7th. So there you go.
Chuck, can you mute, please? Thanks. Okay, so we'll meet the 29th and not meet the 22nd. And then we'll take it, we'll go from there. DRA does want to meet on the 7th, which would mean the 7th and the 14th.
We'll see if they can come in on the 29th instead.
Do they, Paul, do you think maybe if you?
I'll find out, Madam Chair.
See, see if they want to come in on the 29th and then we could then assess at that time what we have going on for the 7th or 14th. Great.
Thank you.
Okay.
While you've got your calendars out, Town Clerk mentioned, of course, that July 4th, which falls on a Thursday, would you like to rearrange the month to the 11th and the 25th for your meetings, July 11th and July 25th?
Okay, yeah, July 4th is the first Thursday. So the second Thursday and the last Thursday would be 11 and 25. So I would say yes on that one.
Well, does that mean we're going to meet on June 20th?
The June 20th and then July 4th is the holiday?
Do we, again, do we have to decide now? I mean, depending on what I'm trying to avoid is being here at 10 o'clock at night with my brain just in a coma. So.
Okay.
I mean, we're definitely not going to meet on the 4th, but whether we meet, it's going to mean the Thursday before or.
We can talk about this in May, can't we?
Yeah.
Well, the, the reason I bring it up, Madam Chair, is because Town Clerk has to think about deeding that particular time of, that particular time of the month.
And what night does she need it to be?
Well, she was hoping, that's why we chose the 11th and the 15th.
She's hoping that we would meet on the 11th?
Yes, correct.
Well, we would definitely meet on the first week of July anyway, right? I would say we would.
The first week in July is the 4th, though.
No, I mean.
We can meet on the 11th.
Right. The, the following weeks, yes. So for deeding purposes, we'll meet on the 11th.
Thank you very much. I, I spoke with Helen Hanks and I did send an email. Because there is no candidate's night, we, we don't really need one. There's no, people are not running against the Board of Selectmen, they're not running against the Budget Committee. Helen felt that there was no need for a candidate's night and I was, she said, check with the board.
Oh, shucks.
Well, yeah.
I'm just kidding. You don't like them.
I think I was told Supervisor, the checklist is the only one that has two contesting, so.
We can do one in the paper for them. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Yep. That's a consensus, Paul.
Thank you, Madam Chair, very much. Into the meat of my report, I'd like, there's a one action item. If you look behind my report, it's the job posting for the DPW, truck driver and laborer. I just need your blessing for that to go in the paper, website and New Hampshire classified.
I would take out within six months of employment with a pay increase with, I would take out with a pay increase if successful. Board, what do you think?
Where's this paper?
First, right behind Town Administrator's Report.
Oh, man, I'm in finance. All right, now we're cooking. I gotta purge this stuff.
Thanks, John.
I gotta purge this book. Now, you want to take out the if successful part?
With a pay increase if successful, starting with a pay increase because that's really shouldn't be a guarantee.
You want to put a period after employment?
Right, because you can obtain a CDL B and have other issues.
I'm fine with that.
Me as well.
Everybody? Okay, that's a yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yep. Yep.
I would work, we don't build roads anymore. Construction of streets in the next second paragraph. Maintenance, repair, and construction of streets, sidewalks, and grounds. We don't build roads.
So it should say the knowledge of equipment for the maintenance, repair, and construction of street sidewalks and grounds.
We're gonna be doing some of that, not just knowledge.
But we don't build streets.
We repair stuff.
We repair.
We repair and maintain streets, sidewalks.
To construction, change it to maintenance.
Pulverts.
And maintain, repair and maintain.
And grounds.
Shall I take out the word construction?
Yes.
What change it in?
Repair and maintain of streets, maintenance of streets.
Thank you. Can I continue, Madam Chair? Thank you.
Everybody all set with that?
Yes.
Yes.
The Senior Center Generator. Josh Carter will be at the Senior Center on the 19th and the 20th. He recognizes that it's a holiday, President's Day, but he's, he can be there on his own and he doesn't need his handheld, apparently by DPW. And Chris Khan of Khan Man is going to install the gas line in early March.
I want to stop you there because I do believe he needs his handheld with the Senior Center. There are several issues throughout the years with electrical and being in two different fuse boxes and so on and so forth. I would like to at least be present just to show him where things are and be available. And I realize it is President's Day, but I cannot get there until 9:30 because I have to work on President's Day. And I'm fine, and then I'm fine for him to be on his own.
I'll share that with him. Thank you. Academy Street, as requested by the Board of Selectmen, DPW put up barriers and wrote "No Parking" on them. I went down there and saw it myself and there was one car still parked there, but. Chief, you're happy with their way? That the barriers were put up and there's no parking, so, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I thought you were going to ask me if he was happy with the car that was still parked.
Well, no, he wasn't happy with the car. No. The Concord Laconia Connector Bus, I sent an email to Cindy Jansky and left a message, but apparently she doesn't return to work until tomorrow. Her email bounced back, not, not undeliverable, but couldn't get through. And when I tried her by phone, I had to leave a voice message. The election items were given to me by Selectman Dawson. Amy Despens has got the list and she's started taking care of that for us. The Eversource Polls, Eversource has given me three work order numbers. One of the proposal to put a light pole at our end of the street for the work that needs to be done along the riverbank and also by the bridge. I had a meeting with Kate Saunders yesterday, the outgoing head of Tilton School, to discuss an easement required for the removal of poles by the river. AARP Grant Opportunity. On February the 8th, I submitted a grant application for senior outdoor fitness equipment to be used at Riversfront Park. We should hear by mid-May if we have been successful.
Are you a question, Paul?
Yeah.
So, when's proposal to put a light pole at our end of the school street? We're looking for a light pole here.
Yes.
Oh, okay, not, not the end.
No, no, here, here, yes, yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, correct.
I have a question about, I'd like the outdoor senior fitness equipment. Have you sent that over to the Parks Department?
The Parks Department is aware of it. It's something they'd been talking about for a while.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure the left hand knew what the right hand.
Thank you, yes, they met Monday night.
Good enough.
Thank you, Catherine. Catherine, Selectman Justman, Catherine did give me pictures of the equipment, which I forwarded to, yep, AARP. Primex Member Admin Tool, I've been given a member admin tool on the Primex website, which allows me to create accounts for our employees and in particular invite them to training classes provided by Primex. Emergency Response Training. Chief Gilman and I are working to finalize an active threat prevention and an emergency action plan for our employees. Primex Supervisors Academy, that should be Shane. Shane Dow is attending the Primex Supervisors Academy for three days next month. Joint Loss Management Committee. I did copy the board on my email to staff regarding the subject. The last meeting of the Joint Loss Management Committee was in August 2022, and we must get this off the ground if we are going to be successful with our prime target this year. Chief Gilman and Leanne are the two remaining employees from the last committee. I am going to select another three staff members and establish this committee quickly. Just Maple, I spoke with Roger Prow, who informed me that they are continuing with their event on the 16th and 17th of next month and that he, and that we would have a driver available if needed. But, Madam Chair, he, he didn't get back to me and say.
The cost of what, what he would pay for the driver?
Right, yeah.
What, did you mention that?
Yeah, I did mention, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Did we agree to the bus?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
I couldn't drive it because of town meeting.
I didn't think we actually agreed. We discussed a lot of options.
I thought we agreed to do it.
But I didn't think we actually had a vote and agreed to.
I don't think we took a vote, but I think we agreed.
Wow.
Yep. Want to change that?
What?
You want to change that?
I don't know how I voted. I hope I know how, I hope I voted no.
Shall I, shall I look back in the minutes, Madam Chair?
The record show.
Yeah. I think Roger left here with the impression that a bus was going to be provided.
No, we talked about it after last meeting, I believe we talked about it.
Oh, I wasn't here.
No, there you go, that's why you don't remember.
I was concerned.
Right, thank you. DPW Trainings. Sally Tanner, our Primex Member Services Consultant, met this afternoon with Shane Dow and Amy Despens and myself to discuss other trainings available to the DPW and addressed with Amy the Primex Annual Reporting Process, which has to be completed by March 1st. Caleb Hill Road Project. Brian Colburn met with me yesterday to discuss this project in its entirety. He's asking for a public listening session on April 4th after town meeting. He did say he mentioned that during one of the meetings some weeks ago. And I just need your blessing that we could have that half an hour before.
April 4th?
April 4th, yes.
April 4th, but I suggest that we have it at the Police Department, the meeting that night, if it's, if April 4th is available. And because there will be quite a few people. And, and then also have it at a time when people are also getting out, have already been home from work. Like a 6 o'clock or something like that.
6 o'clock.
Let's get it out there now, though.
Yeah.
Yep. PD, thank you.
Is everybody okay with the PD and what I suggested? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Room is open, Chief, does that interfere with?
Health Trust 101. Amy Despens and I had a conference call with our Health Trust Member Services Consultant to go over some human resource questions, which we couldn't answer for new hires. Now that she and I are the HR team, it's been recommended that we have a virtual meeting with the folks at Health Trust and go over all the plans being offered to our employees. This is scheduled for Tuesday, the 20th. Federal Highway DOT Grant. I shall be behind closed doors on Tues, on Wednesday, rather, next week, while I complete an application for the proposed, well, I put new bridge on the island. But I, I will probably look into it a little more detail now after the discussion with the board this evening. But this was a highway, a bridge grant opportunity that I, I didn't think I should miss.
I would think that.
I would go ahead with it.
To go ahead with it because that may
Right.
Just increase that option.
Sure, it may impact what we're, what we're trying to decide. Absolutely.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna, I'll be behind, so I'm turning the phone off and close the door, so.
Sometimes it's easier to just to work at home when those things happen.
Yeah.
Unless, of course.
I'd rather do it. I'd rather do it at work.
Plus, of course, you have five dogs at my house and then it's easy to work at
Right.
Work.
The Civil War Monument. I'm awaiting to hear from Mike Hardy of Superior Fence regarding the prices for the posts and the panels to fix this problem. Thank you, Madam Chair, that's all.
When we discuss the Civil War Monument fence.
Yep.
Did we ask for a price to replace the, I thought we replaced, we were going to replace the whole western side.
Yes.
As far as we needed to, and also for them to reposition the fence on the Winter Street side that have come off the posts.
Yes.
That's what we were looking for Superior Fence to do.
To take some of the back and replace the side on the Winter Street.
And then replace the back with a like.
A like, okay.
Correct.
Yeah, so. But we didn't encumber any funds to do this because we didn't have a price.
We did not, because we sent Jeannie back and asked for a different type of material to, to different types of material to see what they had.
And it didn't get, you know.
And, and it never, we never got back with different types of material.
And can I ask if we, the post that is just pushed off the, the set, it's, will stand there, opposite Winter Street? I don't know, opposite, what is it?
Cedar.
Cedar Street. Could we ask DPW if they can do it? We asked a different DPW director before, perhaps this fellow is a little more accommodating. It, I looked at it, if you, you could move it back.
I looked at it yesterday.
Yeah.
Yesterday, day before?
Perhaps the guys can, you know, have them take a look, see if they can just put that piece right opposite Cedar Street. You can't miss it. And they've been paying the.
If they have time.
Gently.
It would be worth it to simply ask them, just take a look and see if it's something they could do.
Right.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Yes.
So as a note, when Paul had mentioned the Concord Laconia Connector Bus, just as a note, I witnessed the bus come in and pull in and stop at Walmart the other day.
Oh.
Oh, did? Yeah, I did, so it was there.
And the chief?
Yep, they did, they stopped in and
Oh, good.
I watched it as I was sitting in the parking lot.
Oh.
Chief, did you have anything to do with that?
Yeah, you did.
So if it is, maybe we can find out what their route and schedule is and post it on.
It's, it's already up. The route and schedule's been up for over a month now, so.
On our website?
I don't know, it's, I, I don't know if it was reposted from when.
Excuse me?
Sorry.
We have Ms. Alden in the audience that is going to come up after the department reports to speak on just that thing.
Oh, good.
Okay, thanks.
I have our transportation person.
That's correct. She's our transportation rep.
We can move along.
Okay, so why do we have department reports here? Department?
We're, we're, we're having monthly department meetings now and the, the reports will be in by the 10th business day after the close of the previous month. So on your third Thursday, you'll get the, you'll get the department reports to.
We don't have any tonight.
Yes, they're in the, they're in your book. They should be in.
There's a police one.
Well, we get that every week.
Yeah, but there's.
So that, that, there should be Leanne's, Chief Gilman's, and Shane Dow's, there's three behind in department reports.
Yep, monthly land use.
But we get, okay.
Because you were getting them six months or, sorry, quarterly from land use and we suggested it be monthly.
Can we get these emailed to us when, when that happens so that we can read these ahead of time instead of taking up the meeting?
Certainly.
Agenda to read them? Because if you look at, for instance, the Human Services, you need a mic, you need a magnifying glass to read it.
Madam Chair, that one's been in there some time, I believe.
You still need a magnifying glass to read it.
Yeah. I think that was for the annual, annual report.
So.
January 26th.
Does the Board want to take time and read these or do you want to sort of retake them?
I can read them at home.
Read them at home and if you have any questions, we'll bring it up next week?
Email it.
The next meeting?
If we can get just emailed this.
Okay, can we have them emailed to us?
Yeah.
That would be great. Okay. That's super. All right, Selectmen's Reports. John, you're up.
So Conservation meets next week? And hasn't been another meeting since last time. I got some calls from a resident on Morrison Ave. They, we just had the binder coat put down and they regraded the road and did all that. Liberty Utilities dug it up and replaced it with cold patch. So I report to Paul to let Shane know because we have specific rules about it. And then somebody said they were up there doing some more dig safe marking on the road again, so I don't know.
They can't just dig up the road.
They're supposed to get a permit.
It was, it was an emergency, Selectman Scanlon, it was a gas leak.
Yeah.
And they had to get right out there, yeah.
So one of the reasons, and what I was told, is that when they took the houses out, when Honda went in, they never disconnected the pipe at the actual main line. They just abandoned the pipe. So it started leaking, so they had to go back and dig up where the main line was and cap it off there. So I'm not sure. And, and then the other two houses, the Coleman's houses that were in the back strip there, they had gas lines too. And they think that that, I was told that maybe they have to dig up because they never shut those off properly. So it's important that we know and that they know that they're supposed to get this done. We notified them, I believe, right before we did the work, that we put a moratorium, they fix everything. We replace our road. And then after that, if they didn't do work, you know, emergencies are acceptable. If they didn't do the work they should have done beforehand, then they're responsible. Like, right? I don't know, you, you probably know more. Yeah.
They are responsible, but with the exception being emergencies.
So.
Within two years.
Yeah, so the problem is, is that they dug it up and they put cold patch in. And then we're going to put our final, what do you call it, top coat? Shim coat?
No, because
In the spring?
Before they do, before they do the, in the, before they do that, they have to dig that cold patch out. They can't put the cold pat, they can't put the asphalt on the cold patch.
And that's what I was saying.
That's what John's saying.
Yeah.
But they put the cold patch because there's no asphalt around.
Yeah, they have a heater that they go around in a portable one, they, they do.
But we, John's right.
We all make sure that it's done because Porter might just jump in there and do it. Right.
Yeah, we need to be proactive, you're right.
So, you know, hopefully, that's the way it always works. Fix a road.
I think we need to let them know that that was done. I don't think they're just going to go and just do it and not know, I mean, we have to let them know that that's what was done, that it was done.
With your street, John.
Well, it's not, I'm on Main Street, so.
He's Main Street, so.
I just hear the most from people on, I'm, I'm the, they have my phone number. The next thing is, I'm, maybe you can clarify this. We had. We had a discussion on notifying about applications and that all boards would get copies of applications. And I think Selectman Dawson brought this up.
Are you talking from land use?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so that's still not happening. I brought it up, I think, a couple of weeks ago too. I just found out that on Mechanic Street, which are behind onions, they wanted to do a subdivide that, it's a small lot now. I think it's only like 30 feet of frontage. It's very narrow, but out back, there's a barn out here. They want to separate that. But I never heard about it and.
Aren't you on the planning board?
Yeah.
That's a sub.
And also the other thing, and these were supposed to go out to planning, zoning, conservation, and ZBA. And I did bring this up. This will be the third time that we've discussed this. Also, the lot near the Hampton Inn, you know, where the little ice cream place was and, Chris, it's hard for you to.
Yeah.
The ice cream place and the model cars, collectibles. So I had no idea because when the application came in, it never went out to anybody. They're going to be using that as a truck parking lot for, in a staging area for the guys who do the repairs, trees, you know, when they come down and all that.
Alignment, yes.
They've been there for several weeks.
Yes.
And they're actually going, they're now going for a, they went to the planning board. But that was supposed to go out to all the boards and committees and that was. I think that was Selectman Dawson. What specifically did we say it was?
I know that when I brought it up, it was for it to go out to ZBA, planning, conservation, and sewer.
And sewer, yeah.
And sewer. And it was the majority, we all said, agreed and said, yes. I.
We shouldn't have this a fourth time.
I don't understand why.
Whatever the problem is, it needs to be rectified.
I mean, they can be emailed.
Yeah.
It should be emailed.
Yeah. Most of the site plans and whatnot and subdivisions are almost all electronic, plus the papers, but.
If people of any of the boards have interest, they can also come down and take a look at the originals or whatever.
I mean, the application certainly should be going out. And if those, you know, those can be scanned in and emailed out quickly. I mean, even I know you create this big group file and just.
Look at you, Catherine.
I've never done it.
That smartphone has made you smarter.
And the next thing was the, all of the archives, I don't know if the link is gone or they all disappeared, but all the archives are gone from the planning and they only go back to 20, 2020. It's all, it's, you can go on your phone and look at it and it doesn't exist anymore.
We seriously need to come up with with planning, especially with all these, the files, digitizing it, digitalizing it.
Yeah, we. And that's when something we've been bringing up.
What good does it do if you go online and they, and they don't exist? Digitizing them.
They were there previously?
Yeah.
So it used to, I know we had a program. For some reason, we don't use the program anymore. You could go onto a property and see all the building permits, everything that was going on with that property. And it was great for people needing research, but I just, as John's bringing this up, it occurred to me that.
We had.
Big files, electronic. And, you know, when you condense things like that, they can be available on the website. We seem to be doing, we seem to be doing less instead of more.
Are they available at the Town Hall? That information.
I don't know. I would guess, yeah, it must be.
Convenient to have them all online, but.
Somewhere manually, they're here at Town Hall, yes.
But no, these were there.
Well, he's asking if they're somewhere at Town Hall, yes.
Hard trials.
You know, yeah, they're not on the town website.
I know.
Right.
Tim keeps backups of all these things, so.
You would think, you'd have to ask Tim because Tim's the only one who does that kind of work.
You know, going back to just 2020 now is like a huge swatch of stuff just.
That's crazy.
Yeah. And that's all I have.
And what I have to say isn't really anything to bring up here at the table. I mean, I've been out and about and doing stuff and water meetings and stuff like that. I can say that the generator, backup generator is online over at Lockmere Village. Got a big donation of food for the senior center.
Nice.
Just stuff, you know, won't take up any more of the board's time.
Hey, Catherine.
All right, the Parks Committee met Monday night. And as you can see in the to be signed folder, we have a new member. It's exciting because we've been reduced in size and there's a lot to do there. We had a gentleman come in who wants to conduct a farmer's market at, on the 132 Ball Field one day a month, I believe it was.
It is.
Tuesday, I believe, but regardless.
Do you say yes?
Yes. Every Tuesday, May 28th to early October 8th.
Thanks.
3:30 to 6:30. He is paying the park commissioners a fee for that, which will go into the reserve fund. But I also told him he has to fill out a hawkers and peddlers. Why not?
Because it's agricultural.
Not all of it, probably.
No. Yes, yes.
You know this?
I know, absolutely know this. Years of running of farmer's market here in Tilton and, and Sammerton. It's all under the umbrella of agricultural. Now, within that farmer's market, if somebody sells something that is not made from their own wares, then they need to get a hawkers and peddlers if they, one of their vendors.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
But not that person that.
No, no, no.
Runs the farmer's market.
Everything in there was agricultural.
So if, if somebody, if there's six vendors with vegetables, no. If they're fruits of their own wares, it's agricultural. If you manipulate wood and from your, your own, it's fruits of their own wares, it's, I've been through this a thousand times with the agricultural department. It's, I can quote you the RSA at another time, Catherine. But yes, we've gone through this, you and I have battled this one, hawkers and peddlers.
Right, but that wasn't the question, but thank you.
All right, so what's the question? So.
There's no, because there are craft people there that, that aren't agricultural. But since they're already paying the town through the park commissioners a fee, the park commissioners wanted me to ask if you would waive the hawkers and peddlers fee.
Only if that, so.
This group.
It depends, I mean, they don't really need, think about this.
No, there are people, there are craftspeople there, but these, they're all, so it's this one individual that's having this event.
Yeah. But the craft people that are having the, the vendors that are craft people, unless they buy a craft and resell that craft as is, then they need hawkers and peddlers.
Yes.
If they, if they.
And there will be people like that there. That's why they're asking.
The fish guy, and the guy that brings in fish from the coast, that guy would need a hawkers and peddlers, right?
Right, so.
But not the craft.
That's why we're asking if the town would.
So a quilter would not.
For the hawkers and peddlers because it does make it complicated and he's already paying the park commissioners a fee. So that's what the question is.
Yeah, so I would say. Could you repeat the days?
I have to refer. Yes, and they were told that they would have to coordinate with you if there was an event there. The police department has priority over that gravel parking lot. I'm not sure if that's so.
So if they parked on the left though, too, or, but.
Well, I just made it clear that they would have to coordinate with the chief with their events. It's every Tuesday, May 28th to October 8th. I just thought it was safer to let them know that they needed to contact him for parking.
I think you already know my opinion on farmer's markets. They're much, much needed in the town. They bring us value to, to it and I would absolutely waive it because I don't believe we need a hawkers and peddlers for a farmer's market, simple as that. Board.
I didn't think farmer's markets needed a hawkers. Some of the vendors within the farmer's market may need a, but not the farmer's market.
Well, and there might be, that's, that's the problem. There might be and there might not be.
Those people that, that require hawkers and peddlers should still get a hawkers and peddler.
Even though they're already paying a fee.
If they're paying, buying stuff and reselling it.
I don't, I don't agree with you, Joe, because the RSA, they pay a fee to get into the farmer's market. It's under the umbrella of agricultural here, under, under the agriculture.
Even if it's not agricultural.
You get time to look it up.
Even if it's not something that they made themselves.
May 28th, weekend time.
Well, he's trying to find a venue and.
We'll figure it out somehow.
We'll work it out.
Make sure it's done right.
Okay. This one's easy. This one's real easy. And I'm remiss. I've been asked this for quite a while. Could we put the clock back in the downstairs meeting room? There used to be a clock on that pillar, so when you had a meeting, you could tell is it time to start the meeting and what time to meet again.
I think we have to purchase one because I think it's broken.
The one, it broke and then it was taken down when we did all the painting and.
Right, it did.
And it never got put back up because it's broken.
Because I think it got broken. So we need to get another.
New clock.
New clock.
And do you want us to plant the trough in the monument again this year?
Absolutely. Thank you. You do such a great job.
We have resources for that, Catherine? We have resources for that.
Yes, the name is Bob Hardy. It's the least expensive place to buy plants.
No, I.
But we, do we have it in budget?
What? We have money.
Yes, it's in the event. So it's always been in the event, some of the events.
Well, he was gonna offer my candy money. I knew it.
Not me.
And lastly, I have other notes here. So I had contacted Paul to find out where we were on the fence at Civil War Monument because we have a problem.
Yep.
There are people walking their dogs. We do have an ordinance on dog piles.
Defecating.
Supposed to be removed and it's not happening.
Right.
It's been going on for quite a while and what's happened now is the broken fence has now been moved in such a way in two places on that abutting property where they pass through. If you look after the snowstorm tomorrow, you'll, you'll be able to see. Paul Ruschlo, who maintains that in the summer, is concerned because they are making a hardened path. They're compacting the soils, which we all know will eventually kill the grass. So I'm not sure, the park commissioners, we discussed it Monday night, we're not sure which way to go. The chief's here. It's really hard to enforce that dog ordinance.
DNA.
So.
Really hard.
It's really hard. That's expensive.
Why is it hard? Is it the language? Or is it because you have to catch them?
Catch them.
Whoa, would you like me to take pictures?
Now, I happened to be there the other day and a gentleman was walking two of his dogs. And I was there to look at the fence on Winter Street to see how many were off and whatnot. And I was so surprised that there it was right in front of me. I was like, wow. And yes, no, it didn't get cleaned up. But the park commissioners have talked about not allowing dogs in the park, which would probably be the easiest thing to enforce. If you see them. Because if you see them, that's instant. You don't have to watch and see what the dog does. And the other was talking about if there was some way while we're waiting for Superior Fence, getting the price because we didn't budget for the cost of repairing that fence. We didn't encumber the monies. But how could we secure that western end of the fence so that people could not pass through? And it might be just as simple right now as putting up a snow fence.
It's DPW, maybe they have a piece of fence or something.
I don't know.
Chain link or something to patch that or.
I hate to close the entire park down to everybody because of a few bad actors, though.
Well, there was never a pass, pass through there. The pass through was down on Main, West Main Street.
Well, no, fixing that, yeah, but I don't want to close the whole park.
No, and that's what the, the park commissioners were suggesting is just to secure the western end where they've actually made pass-throughs for people.
So this, so the issue is if they don't go in the park, then they come up on the side of Maple Court where we mow, you know, the town property where, where they mow. So there, there's a very similar pattern.
I don't understand why they wouldn't use their own property.
I have no idea, but it's, it's, it's a nuisance.
Because then they'd have to pick it up.
Because we do.
Is that the planning board thing?
So it's, it's, it's an issue and it needs to be out. That's why I asked if it was the language because we can ask the prosecutor to help with that language if it needs to be a little stronger. But if it doesn't, then if it's a problem, then, you know, maybe you need to say, no dogs in the park. But I know where they're gonna go if you say no dogs in the park because it's not just the park. It's an issue.
Yes, they didn't, like I said, there was a big discussion Monday night. They didn't send me here with these things to present to the board to see what we could do. Securing that end might help. But that entrance on West Main Street is just a quick walk because that property has an ingress and egress on both sides.
What is the fine for not controlling your dogs?
Oh, I'd have to look.
I think it's $250.
So.
It should be enough.
So we have a list of butters to that park there. And could we send a letter notifying them that it, it's this amount to the butters? Would cost a few dollars or, you know, to under $10 to send it out to notify them that there is a fine and we will be enforcing it. And because I think that's one of the things you can have to.
I can do that as health officer. I suppose it's a health issue.
It is.
I don't know who enforces that.
Send it out to all the butters out there, Maple Court as well.
Maple Court doesn't abut.
I know, but there's an issue there.
Oh.
It passes from there up to there.
Oh, I thought you meant those people there went to, I thought you meant the butters that Civil War went to Maple Court.
They do.
Oh.
So if it's specific, you know, and sends out that we've, you know, we've noticed that there's been that, there's a fine to this much, we will be enforcing it, please. Curb your dog.
It sounds accusatory somehow.
Well, if you send out. Well, if you send out to butters in that area where you're noticing.
I'll come up, I'll just notify them that it, you know, blah, blah, blah. But I have a question for the chief.
$25? You gotta be kidding me. Somebody that's responsible and owns a dog should be accountable. Who wrote that anyway?
Probably the pesky board at select.
No, actually, it was a former chief of police.
That's correct.
Chief, I have a question. I have a question for you. Can, if we put a game camera or a camera in there, is that legal, can we?
A notice.
Yes, then we put up a sign letting them know there's a camera there?
You have to do that.
Can we do? Right, but regardless of the type of camera we put in there, we'd have to have a notice, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Don't we own a pole camera? Don't we own a pole camera? We don't have to buy cameras.
So we could have, yeah, it, it's good idea to just notify people in the neighborhood first, we will be enforcing it. Yep, signage, put a little sign where they cut through the gate, wire it on there, little metal sign.
Well, I think, I think I was recognized, I didn't, you know, speak to the person, but I think I was recognized because they left pretty quickly. Looked at me several times, but they didn't know I was here looking at the fence.
Okay, anything else?
No, I'm done, thank you.
All right. Jane Alden. Oh, yeah, it is. You're absolutely right.
Well, maybe we should increase the fine, number one. And that's a lot of letters, maybe we ought to post something on the website to remind people. Yep. But I will send out letters.
How many registered dogs in town? How many registered dogs approximately? When do they renew their licenses? Okay.
But I don't think everybody does.
Okay, so anybody that comes in, can we, is that something that we could do, is make a card, hand them a card? It says, Tilton doesn't enforce that, and there are fines, curb your dog.
When was the last ticket you gave out for that?
What?
When was the last ticket you gave out for that?
We don't think we've ever given a ticket out for.
1929.
That's the problem.
Well, I, I think a lot of people don't know that we, we will, you know, and that there is a fine, they don't know.
All right.
I know the question, I want to ask the chief, I'm sorry.
To notify people.
Could I have taken a video or a picture of those dogs and the person or not the person? Okay. I didn't, because I wasn't sure.
Okay, anything else?
No, I'm good, thank you.
That's it? Okay. Scott, I'm gonna skip over you, because I've done that most of the night, no, go ahead, go ahead.
So, I, just one thing, and her name was mentioned before in Paul's report, but Kate Saunders, the head at Tilton School, will be departing campus tomorrow, and I think, I think for the last couple of years, especially with her willingness to open up the campus for the summer concerts, and, and obviously with the insider scoop, but the, the projects that she has initiated and then made sure that we were getting more and more of a connection with the town, getting the mansion back open so people could see the mansion. I, I think, you know, and obviously with her leaving tomorrow, this doesn't increase my raise up there, so, but I just think a big thanks to Kate Saunders for really starting to foster even more of a connection between the town and Tilton School. She's been wonderful, and I think she'll be missed all around, so.
Huge thank you.
Huge thank you to Kate Saunders.
Is there any way we can get a letter from the town to her or no?
Yeah, she'll be, I mean, she'll be back and forth to campus, and she's helping the new head of school transition, and he'll be here usually a couple of times a week, so I, I think, you know, if Paul does it, or you can even hand it off to me, and I can get it to her however we want to do it.
We help create an appreciation letter to Kate Saunders over the years and huge thank you for her commitment to the community and the town.
Yes, I'll do that, manager.
Thank you.
And that's all I have this evening.
All right. I don't have much, the executive committee's meeting on the 20th, there's a 24th, there's a ham and bean supper fundraiser up at the senior center. And we need to pick the community service award for outstanding dedication to the community, and I.
Got to be somebody who lives in town, though, huh?
Oh, right. Where's our little sticky notes?
Right there, it's on top of the.
Well, Scott has a name, and I think.
Write them all on, then we pass them, voted.
Pass around and vote, and I think I'm, I'm gonna, I'm for the one that Scott puts down. Anybody else have any names?
I don't know his name.
Okay, if you don't, then we could talk about it in non-public.
I'll write a hint.
Okay.
I know who it is.
How many more sticky notes? We need a bigger sticky note pad.
Well, can we afford a bigger sticky note in the, notes in the budget? We finally got a Kleenex box, a box of Kleenex, I should say, that's backwards.
Pat will know it when she sees it.
Oh, I do know that one. Well, that's a good one. Okay, three good choices. Top one is not.
Out of four.
Top one is not a.
A Tilton resident, yeah, I know, but nobody does anywhere near as much as that guy to promote Tilton and the community. Just saying.
We'll talk about it in non-public.
Yes.
Because the middle one, you need to, to hear. And we know the top one, and the bottom one you need to hear as well. Because there's a lot of years on that lot of them. We can't tell you because it's revealed at town meeting, so I'm sorry, folks, you'll have to wait till town meeting. A secret. So that is it for me, and that being said, Jane Alden from the RCC Transportation Committee was asked to speak to the board tonight on that particular subject matter of transportation. Now that she's 80.
She can come up here, you can have a seat right in front.
Jane, speak to us up here.
I want to be up here.
Very official.
I'm, I want to be the alpha dog. That's what, that's what our dogs do, they get on the back of the couch and look down on everybody indirectly.
Unless they don't leave their droppings around town.
I know. The bus route between, oh, I have to talk into here.
You'll be all right.
I just want to make sure I'm on camera, too, is that, is that appropriate now that I'm 80?
The top of your head is, anyway.
I didn't bring my baby seat in to, as Pat said, I'm the, the town representative of the mid-state regional coordinating committee for transportation. And the bus between Concord and Maconia is up and running now. It is a free bus, I think that's real important for the residents of the town to know. It makes a lot of stops, I have asked Cindy Yansky to provide us, she's the mobility manager, with more brochures, I do have one so that you can see it now. And I think Cindy came and spoke with all of you before it was up and running. There were some initial problems with the stops, because certain locations did not want the bus to load or unload there, and it was, it was because of liability issues. That was the reason, it wasn't, they were trying to be mean, and I won't mention the places it are, but it is up and running. I have, it's, it's a dynamic program, because we have now in Tilton the dialysis center. And a lot of citizens in Tilton, Northfield, so on, go to the dialysis center, so that will be added now that that's operation, if you see other areas that you think should be added, we're very open to adding those. Lake Street and Planning is involved, and they would, I have a rider survey that they're doing. I'm gonna ask you for permission to have the town clerk put these at least at her desk so that people can see it and respond to it. It also can be scanned electronically.
Is it the survey or is it?
The survey. Okay, it's real important that we find out where people want to go that we're not going. And if there are enough people who want to, then those stops can be added. But please promote it, I see the bus around, I'm not sure our residents all know that it's now operating. It was canceled at one time, it's federally funded at this point in time, but our commitment is to try to continue to receive funds or in the future to have maybe a nominal charge, but it will never be to the point that people can't afford it. So please talk it up. And do I have permission to put these at the front desk, the survey, for any riders?
As far as I'm concerned. All right with the town clerk?
Just put it on the.
It's her counter.
Is that okay? Okay. And, and the other thing, I've asked Cindy to send more brochures. I think it's important, for instance, that the welfare director get brochures. I know in the past, she's been able to use the transit system for, and people who need employment, and they have no way to get there because they have no car, well, this again will stop at J Jill. It will stop at other areas in town. So I think it's a great thing for the town of Tilton, I'm really happy to see it back again. But look for it's the, the little transit bus going around, and you'll see it stopping in some strange places. I saw it stop the other day by the railroad station because somebody wanted out. You can call ahead if there's a need. So, all right, thank you.
So I, Jane, I'm looking here, it says, plan your trip with Google Maps, that you can just put your start point and destination, and there'll actually be a transit icon, and it will tell you how you can get there using their bus.
So it's, it's important to go, to go to their website when, when the brochures come out, the website is on there. And we're updating the website, because that was one of the delays initially, is that we didn't have the website updated, so.
Yeah, it says ConcordAreaTransit.com, this is just absolutely incredible, I, I think people who don't have access to cars and people who are trying to seek employment that are kind of down and out, they can now get to all these, place employment, I, I see there's some stops listed in Tilton, Hobby Lobby. I think there was Walmart.
When I'm Walmart.
J Jill's.
Yeah.
Tanker outlets.
But this is the thing that we need to talk up, because we do, for a long time, we didn't have the committee. And Tilton in the past had, at one time, we helped fund them, we no longer do, but as I say, there are lots of federal grants, it's how we ended up getting the senior center bus. It's, it's a good organization.
I was on RCC for a number of years.
Do you have those at senior center?
Well, I, this is the only one I have right now.
I don't even have one.
They've just been printed, okay? So I have asked Cindy to send me, and I will see that they're at the senior center, that they're at the library, that they're at town hall.
Maybe, you know, somewhere downtown like Diana's, if they can put it in their window where people come in and people can start charity, or I don't know if our kiosk, it's appropriate, but even in the front window or town hall.
Okay, so thank you for your time.
That's great, thanks.
Thank you, Jane.
It's awesome.
She did say short and sweet, and wow. 80 is the new. Wow, 80, I'm, I guess you do get short and sweet when you're 80, right? Okay, is there any more business to come before us in a public meeting? Well, it's very nice for you to join us, Lieutenant. Good night, thanks, chief.
Hi, chief.
All right. If I, if there's nothing more to come before us in a public meeting, I am going, the time being 7:13, I make a motion to move into non-public for RSA 91A:3, the hiring of any person as a public employee in C matters if discussed in public would adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of this board. Do I hear a second, second, roll call vote?
Aye, Scanlon, yes.
Desmond, yes.
Ruggles, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Constantino, yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
It's not effective till the 26th, right?
We should announce it.
Tonight, okay.
Make the motion, please.
Make them. And then John's seconded it.
Any basic, Joe.
Joe, Joe seconded it.
Okay, we're back, everyone, I'd like to make a motion to seal the minutes of February 15th, 2024, because disclosure would adversely affect the reputation of a person other than a member of the board permanently.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to make an announcement that as of February 28th.
26th.
26th, I'm sorry. Shane Dow will be our new DPW director.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, congratulations, Shane. Okay. Any new business? Joe?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.